All right, welcome, everybody. It's 7 o'clock. This is a time and place set for the regular Royal Park and Commission meeting for December 2023. I'll call the meeting to order, starting down on my right. If we'll go around and introduce ourselves for the record.
Anne Beke.
Clyde Esprit.
Charlene Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twing, Director of Community Development.
Nick Kertowski, City Attorney.
Woody Gantino.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
Jim Ellison.
And I'm Gary Cusato, the Chairperson. All right. Before we do anything else, we have a short agenda tonight, but does anybody on the Commission, Council, or Director have anything to add to the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the November 14, 2023, meeting. Did the Commissioners have a chance to look these over? Do they have any comments, questions, corrections, or a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? Second one, Mr. Ellison. Is there a discussion of the motion to approve the minutes from November 14, 2023? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. I'll sign those and get them to you. All right. Next item. Public comment on non-agenda items. Now, I don't have my gavel today, so I'm not going to give my sing-song, and I'm just going to ask, is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment on non-agenda items portion of the meeting. All right. Next item on the agenda is new business. It's a public hearing, a rezoning from multiple-family residential to planned unit development, SP 23-12-19. Mr. Twing, can you walk us through this?
Very, very good. I'll do a quick, brief overview. As you indicated, this is a request to rezone a property that's multi-family residential to a planned unit development. The site is on the west side of Crooks Road, between West 13 Mile Road and Normandy Road. It's basically across the street from the high school. The properties around it, as you'll see in the report and on the maps, are currently zoned multi-family, and most are also used as multi-family. The petitioner is proposing to demolish the existing structures on-site, which there are two, with a total of 11 dwelling units in those, and to construct a 30-unit multi-family building. As you see on the site plan, the building would be placed along the south portion of the site, and the parking would be added to the north half, as well as under the portion of the building on the south half. There would be, as I indicated, 30 units. They're basically studio units of various sizes. A total of 34 parking spaces would be provided. That's basically 1.3, 1.4, or, excuse me, a little over one spot per dwelling unit. The report also identifies some of the other deviations or comments on a chart on page 6 of 8 in your report. Basically, one of the provisions talks about the primary entrance facing the front facade, and as indicated there, there are, there's a door and stairway that provide access to the second levels, while the primary frontages are on the north and south side, with entrances to the lower units and patios, balconies for the upper units. Secondly, the height-to-width ratio in the ordinance is slightly exceeded on the north and south elevations, as indicated. Again, the lot density requirement under the ordinance would allow five dwelling units, and as I said, there's currently 11, and the petitioner is proposing 30. The height of the building is proposed at 39 feet, some 2 and 1/2 inches, with a peak of 40 inches, 40 feet, 9 inches. Setbacks, as indicated, the west rear yard and south rear yard are slightly, are under the 25-foot requirement. The east and north either meet it or exceed the 25-foot setback requirement. Terms of parking in, or trees in the parking lot, they're depicting three, where four would normally be required under the ordinance. The next provision is in regards to tree replacements. They are removing trees, and they're going to be somewhat about 28 inches short under the replacement standard. So there is a potential either to add more trees, based on your review, or impose the fee, which is $200 per inch, and as you'll see, it's at 28 inches, it's $5,600. As I indicated previously, the number of spaces are proposed at 34. The ordinance standard is two per unit, or a requirement of 60. Those are the deviations or items that you'll need to consider. Other than that, from a staff review, it complies with ordinance requirements. One other item that I will point out, it's not necessarily a zoning ordinance requirement, but the fire marshal in reviewing it, it's, the lot is deeper than their 50-foot standard for pulling in and backing out. The proposal that we received from the petitioner was that they would attempt to get a cross-easement with the property owner to the west, so that they could access out to Devon Road. You'll, so you'll see that listed in the report. Terms of your actions, you've got the standards for PUD review and the rezoning. You can either treat this as a preliminary site plan or a final of PUD, depending on whether or not you need additional information or action that you would want to see the petitioner bring back. With that, I think I've covered the staff report. If there's questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Are there questions for Anne Beke?
I just want a quick clarification. I think I saw this when I read through it earlier. One of the staff's recommendations was that potentially they could do a similar building with some of the exceptions needed, but keep it rather than a planned unit development, keep it as multi-family, more consistent with the neighborhood, which I saw was a recommendation potentially in the package.
Well, since they could proceed in that fashion, they've chosen not to. If they left it as multi-family, they would have to seek several variances from the zoning board of appeals. They can have that explanation as to how you would want to proceed.
Are there questions for the Community Development Director? I have, I have one, a procedural one. Maybe Council will answer. I just want to make clear about the sequence of the votes here. This is one vote. We're voting to approve the PUD and the plan, or we'd be voting to approve the PUD and have them come back for plan? That's one vote?
It's one vote on it. The question is whether you would treat that vote as a preliminary approval or a final approval. If you're doing it as a preliminary approval, you would articulate and ask them to bring revisions back or address certain issues within the next six months for a vote on the final plan. Generally, you're voting on one action.
All right. I have another question. So is this an amendment to the zoning map?
Yes, it would be a change to the PUDs. It is a rezoning.
Okay. So do we need to, I didn't see this in your report. We have the PUD provision, 770-98, and you have the criteria there that you've included in the staff report, but you did not include in the staff report, 770-129, criteria for amendment of the official zoning map. Do we consider this section, and are these criteria applicable here?
Well, they are in terms of, I think both criteria overlap, and there are some additions, but yes.
Okay. So the amendment section, which, well, we'll get to that, but it applies. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. All right. Anything else before we call the petitioner forward? All right, seeing nothing. If the petitioner is here, which I suspect they are, please come forward, introduce your team, and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you're seeking.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Dennis Cowan with Monka Cooney on behalf of Amber the Vines and Amber Properties Company, which owns a number of apartments here in the city of Royal Oak and surrounding communities. And with me is one of the principals of the company, Jerry Amber, and also our Architect of Record from Royal Oak, Jim Schneider. So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to share one thing with you. As you were asking for public comment this evening, I couldn't help but think ticket sales are down. I was here, and so were you, for some meetings late summer, early fall, that were standing room only, so I guess we're going to have to get a different movie.
It's entertainment.
For me?
It's the entertainment.
It's the, the nature of the entertainment, right. If we're going to think about a theme for this project, it would be recreate and reinvest. That is what is going to occur here, as the property was developed actually by Mr. Amber's father and uncle, and that was done in 1972. There was originally a house, which is the front building, that was subdivided into three units. And then there was a prototype modular construction. The last generation of Amber architects were very forward-thinking, not to say that Mr. Amber's brother are not forward-thinking, but their father and uncle were. But this experiment of modular construction lasted for exactly one project, and this was it. And I think many of you have probably been around it. It's pretty old. It's pretty tired. It can't be reclinated. It needs to be demolished. What we are proposing, and they are proposing, is, I believe, an excellent 30-unit project that will have the modern amenities that tenants require today, that are affordable units, and that are compliant with the city's community benefits policy. So as Tim pointed out, this is what I like to refer to and have for years as being apartment row. So all the way from 13 Mile, all the way up to Normandy, which is across from the high school and the ice arena and the park, are all apartments with two exceptions. Chester, the Chester Road facility, which is memory care and assisted living, and then there's condos, albeit multi-family in nature, directly behind the mobile gas station. So this project will remain apartments and will be very consistent with what is in the general vicinity. And I might add that not only are there apartments on the Crooks Road side, the west side, but behind, on Devon Road, there are numerous apartments. In fact, I think the closest residential house is probably more than 300 feet away. I didn't see the list, but we are, in essence, surrounded by apartments, and there won't be any concerns or negative impact on any residential, single-family home properties that are even imaginable here with this renovation and recreation of the property. Amber does have two other facilities to the immediate north at the corner. Some of you were here when that was, in particular, the one from 2019, the Amber Townhomes Project. But those two projects there have both anywhere from one to three bedrooms. So in terms of the company portfolio on Crooks, this is all studios. So those who seek the Amber brand will have a whole, the full menu of housing opportunities from studios up to three bedrooms in those three different properties. We are requesting additional density. We believe it's merited because of the fact that we are replacing what is currently an income-producing property. This is not a green field by any stretch of the imagination. We are significantly upgrading the property with new construction, as well as stormwater detention, which is not on-site at this time. Again, we're providing all the modern amenities, including in-unit washer and dryer, which not everybody has. And then also, a feature that's become a very important one in the recent developments that the Amber companies have done, and that is that there's a outdoor space associated with each unit. So here, the ground floor units have a patio, there's a balcony on the second floor, and then there's a rooftop patio on the top. So those are very important features that tenants really, really like, and it will be incorporated into this project. So with doing all this, plus the narrow property, this is only 100 feet wide, there are deviations that are required. So along with this, and one of the reasons, and we can explain this in more detail, we want the PUD route, is because the PUD route, we do provide community benefits. If you go the straight route to the ZVA, there are no requirement for community benefits whatsoever, and we felt that was important. So Jim will talk more about the environmental sustainability features, but I would note that I believe we'll be the first multi-family that will provide EV charging stations for 50% of our cars. So we'll have enough stations for 15 of the parking spaces. Also, the first floor units, and again, Jim will cover this, do take into account universal design elements for people with disabilities, and particularly ease of accessibility. While we're not designating specific units as workforce, they are clearly workforce attainable. They're smaller units that charge less rent, and that is something, we've done the math, and that fits in very easily with the current formula. But again, we're not designating any units specifically as such. We also are using a Royal Oak-based business, which is Jim Schneider as our architect, and we are also going to provide onsite recycling, which not all multi-family facilities do. Through SACRA, we can purchase the bins for our residents to use for recycling purposes. We do have parking at a one-to-one ratio. I can tell you that because of the number of facilities they have, Amber has more experience in parking at these facilities than anyone. And what they found is with the studio units, and they only rent one person per, you know, one tenant per studio, they have found that the one, just over the one-to-one ratio works very well. And the evidence of that is on 11 Mile, with the smaller studios that went in place, I believe it was 2018. There have been no complaints from tenants, from the neighbors, from the city. We would have heard about it if that was the case. And they clearly are not going to build something where they're going to have a problem and a parking problem, and we don't anticipate any here based on that. So with that, I want to turn it over to Jim to walk you through the site plan and also some of the sustainability features, in particular of the project. Thank you very much.
Both Tim and Dennis there already done a pretty good job of explaining this, so to highlight a couple of things with, Dennis mentioned it briefly, but the first floor units, there's six units. Those are universal in the sense that it's all the same floor plan. And two of those will be designated barrier-free, but essentially, they're all barrier-free units. The bathroom's the same size, the, it's a difference in cabinet layout, whether we put in the accessible height cabinet or not in the other ones. So from that point of view, we've addressed that. I think we're required to have 6%. We could potentially have 20% fully accessible units. So with regard to efficiency, we looked at a lot of things on this site and this building design. One thing we looked at was, how can we make it more energy efficient? One way that we've done that is we've eliminated, there's no large common space here. You have two stairwells that access the second and third floor. You don't have an elevator, which, an elevator is a large user of power, plus you've got major maintenance issues with them as well, so it's a, it's a cost issue. Also, we've used, we've looked at, one thing that we've learned over the years is material sustainability is pretty important, and I've renovated to this point about 10,000 multi-family units all over the state, and I can tell you, what we see consistently is materials that don't last. You're taking them off, you're trying to recycle them, many times you're not, and replacing the materials. So we looked long and hard at that, particularly when you think about things like interior finishes. We've got wood floors, we've got tile in the common spaces, there's no carpeting. We're seeing in multi-family carpeting usually lasts three to five years, and then it's getting torn out. And even though it is technically recyclable, you're also transporting it somewhere, landfilling it. So all those items, even down to the exterior materials on the building made out of renewable or recyclable content, have a very long-term effect on the sustainability of a building, because buildings are around for a long time. And, you know, if you've got vinyl siding or cement siding, those aren't necessarily bad, bad products or bad materials, but when you start looking at life cycle of the material, they just don't last the way this does. So those are some of the important things that we looked at. Obviously, water savings. I can tell you, we just finished building a LEED Silver-certified four-story senior housing building, and if we were scoring this, this would score higher than that did to be LEED Silver. So we're pretty confident in the efficiency of this building. We think it hits a majority of the items in the, you know, the community benefit items. We're removing a blighted or a property that's outlived its usefulness. We're looking at, it's attainable. Dennis touched on this briefly. Based on Amber's current rent structure for a unit this size, the calculations we did, you know, a person earning up to like 69% of median income in Royal Oak would be able to afford one of these apartments. So there's a lot of talk today about affordable housing. The two ways that we can impact it really is density and size. Those are the, those are the two things that we can control to try and bring down the cost of housing. And in addition, I believe the new master plan, the initial swipe at the new master plan, I believe, designates this property or this area for, I think what they're calling high-flux housing, so greater density, more building height, that sort of thing. So that's just sort of a brief overview. Be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Schneider, there are ADA accessibility standards, and then there are universal design principles.
Yes.
Can you tell us which of the universal design principles are featured in the ground floor units?
They're all, you know, accessible in terms of door widths, plumbing fixtures, turning spaces, sustainable materials, you know, those are the things that we look at in terms of universal design.
For example, do bathrooms automatically have grab bars?
They have blocking in the wall, all of them do, so grab bars can be added. That's something always that, you know, we balance with the landlord, but more and more, all of our multi-family units, particularly in, like an elevator building, we design all of the units so every single one of them could ultimately be barrier-free. So it gets down to adding hardware and switching out cabinetry or adjusting counterheights. Other than that, it's completely, it would be ADA at that point.
And you just spoke of counterheights. Do you contemplate providing wheelchair height, counterheights in any of these units?
In two of the units, yes. Two of the units will be wheelchair height. One of the issues that you balance with that is, as an owner, nobody wants to rent an accessible unit. That's why we design them so that they can be made accessible from a universal point of view, but from a marketing point of view, you're always balancing, you know, people that aren't necessarily looking for an accessible unit don't necessarily want to rent an accessible unit. So that's, in essence, what we do is make it, it's designed so that it can be made into a completely accessible unit with addition of grab bars and lowering of counters.
So does that mean if, if they have a tenant who has physical disabilities, they will provide those the suitable features at no cost to that tenant?
Probably not. I would imagine the tenant would, they would want the tenant to participate in that.
So what you're, so you're saying that these units might be designed for accessibility, but the only people that would be affected would be the first ones who move in here, and then after that, you know, they leave, somebody else moves in, and you, you know, you still have those features?
Correct.
Will the, will the company be, and maybe I need to ask this question to Mr. Amber, will the company be marketing these units to people with disabilities?
That would be a question for Mr. Amber, I would think.
Okay. I'll ask that, Chair. Good evening, Mr. Amber.
Hi, I'm Jerry Amber, and the answer is, the type A unit is the barrier-free design, the type B unit is adaptable to type, type A. And we don't specifically market to handicap people, but we get many, many calls, and we refer them to the units that are on our availability list that are handicap units. So there's always units that are type A or type B that are available.
But then you talk about the adaptability of them. I mean, if you've got type A units with a certain set level of accessibility, and you can customize two of them, when do you do that customization?
Before the new resident would move in, but the truth is, it's never happened. We rarely rent to a handicap person, but we have those available units on our list.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Amber before, before he walks away? Anne Beke.
Oh, I'm not sure who the question is for, but I'll first make a comment. I think it's unfair to say that nobody wants units that are adaptable and useful for people who might need them, so we just have to be careful with our language, because it's not nobody, because otherwise, we wouldn't have them at all. I mean, I thought also just that the universal design, the whole point of it is so that it is something that's attractive enough aesthetically to be nice for someone who might need special needs, and then someone else might also be able to live there. That isn't, and that's the whole point of how the direction is going in the interior design and construction businesses, I understand it from following it, not being an architect myself. My question is, though, related to, we know that housing cost and the financial burden to family has a lot to do with housing location, and this location is one that is in Royal Oak, and Royal Oak is a walkable community, and this location happens to be across from the high school. And often, there are single-family parents, maybe one kid in the family, a two-person family, for example. Most of, the vast majority of our households are two, two people, and, and that is the average as well. Did you consider having a few units in here that might accommodate a single parent and a child, since they could at least walk to high school and some other places like that, and not be burdened by transportation costs?
We have, in our development, Amber Landing, one-bedroom lots, two-bedroom townhouses, and townhomes, the building on Normandy. So this would be complementary to the three buildings with this approval, and we have a variety of units available overall.
How many units are in that, those buildings?
One is 24 units, one is 11 units, and this would be 30 units. So it's a variety of units.
And then just related again to the, the units that are accessible. You said you get a lot of calls, but you don't rent to a lot of people about those units, so what might, what might be the mismatch in your professional experience?
They don't decide to rent for a variety of reasons. One is possibly, they found another unit that is more to their liking. There are units that are available on the availability list that would meet their requirements, but not everybody wants to rent when the apartment is available.
All right, other questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think what, if I hear you right, Mr. Amber, what you're saying is, okay, we build the building, there's definitely a demand, a market out there for accessible units, type A, and, but it's hard to predict, right? So you can't build all.
We can't predict.
Can't build all of them that way.
Right.
But you've, you've marked in this project a couple, knowing that people will call, there's a need, and they can go into those units, knowing that if there isn't, because it's a lower in the demand curve, that it's a little bit harder to rent those units out to, let's say, able-bodied people that want the higher countertops and everything. So it's a balance. So you've left, what I hear you saying is, you have the remaining, the B, that in the event, if there is an influx, or if there is a higher demand, or if there's folks that need the barrier-free entry, but... need the barrier-free entry but maybe can have the higher countertops for whatever reason, that there's at least, you're not reconstructing the building, that you can just remove cabinets and put them in if necessary.
The key word is adaptable. It's adaptable to that need.
Other questions? I have one, if nobody else. So did I, I'll make sure I didn't miss this. These are 500 and 600 square foot apartments, and you're going to rent to one person?
Correct.
Okay. And what's the price point? Do you know yet, or is that a formula you got to block?
We have a building on Livernoy, north of Maple, that's very similar in size and type.
1,400.
1,400 for the loft units?
The lofts are--
The loft units are the primo units that have the terrace that goes out on the roof that everybody likes, but not everyone wants to rent that unit. So we have variety. The first floor has private entrances, people with a pet enjoy having those units. Second floor, hallway entrance and not directly to the outside, provides a little more privacy. And the third floor are the terrace units. So we have variety within the building as well.
All right, other questions for Mr. Amber? Oh, I see. Or Mr. Grantina, I mean.
Excuse me. So there's a couple of references made to some of the amenities that were included to help support the PUD request. Can you help me understand, beyond the increased green space and the tree canopy and whatnot, what amenities would not have been included if you had not decided to go the route of the PUD? I'm trying to get a sense of what your standard would have been normally and what you have changed or what you are including as a result of deciding to go for the PUD designation.
Well--
Does that make sense?
We may not have used electric heat pumps. We may not have done some of the water saving. Probably wouldn't have done the electric vehicle charging stations at the number that we're doing them at. Those would be just a few of the items. I mean, I'd have to analyze it and see exactly what they would be, but those would come to mind.
Okay, no, I think that answers my question. Because I'm trying to get an understanding of, again, this is one of the projects where I get very concerned around how we are using the PUD designation for certain projects. This is, we had a similar one come up where the underlying zoning is multi-family already. And so the choice to not go with the multi-family zoning and to go for the PUD, I'm trying to get a sense of if the decision was, we would like to go that direction, and in order to do that, we're going to include these things, or if they were already going to be included, and it just sort of was happenstance and you're counting them as your community benefit.
I would say, you know, when we looked at it, to us, it makes more sense to do it as a planned unit development. My understanding of zoning, and having done this for a while, is, you know, one of the things zoning talks about is perceived hardship. It's difficult to argue a perceived hardship if you're, you know, taking something down and starting from scratch. And going that route also, you know, the existing property already exceeds what's allowable on the property under the current multi-family zoning. So I think, you know, planned unit development made sense to us in terms of, and it's worth doing the amenities, you know, the amenities are obviously a good thing for the future, for the future of Royal Oak. So just all in all, the project in our mind makes more sense as a planned unit development than attempting to justify zoning variances for it.
Because this question has come up before. So let me put it this way, an analogy. The planning commission looks at the movie, the zoning board looks at the snapshot. And so you have the ability to look at the project comprehensively and see, and we also add to that the community benefits. Under the zoning board, we're under no obligation, no applicant is, to add any community benefits. Some certain amenities may be added, but they're only looking at very specific requests, denials from the zoning administrator, and then they have four criteria, depending on whether it's a use or a dimensional variance, to look at a particular project. And so when we were talking about this, because this issue came up in our discussions, we'd rather go the more comprehensive route, provide the community benefits in order to achieve the density. Because that's really the issue in part, is density. And then with it, providing adequate parking and things of that nature, the more functional type things that have to be done on a project. And, you know, the other reality that we're facing today is record construction costs, record interest rates for loans on these types of things. So, you know, the challenge is of getting something done, and I think you feel it and see it because you don't have as many projects coming forward. Actually, Royal Oak is doing a lot better than a lot of other communities. There's many communities just canceling their planning commission meetings, two, three in a row, because they don't have any projects. And that's a function of the economy to a certain part, to a certain extent. And so as a result, we felt, on balance, the best route to go was the PUD route in order to achieve the goals that we have for the project as well as the community benefits we want to provide.
My only other question was, unless I missed it, I didn't see bike racks anywhere. Is there any opportunity or was it considered?
There is a bike rack.
There is, okay. Can you help me see where that is?
It shows up on the landscape plan and I believe on the site plan. It's basically right close to Crooks. So basically, right in front yard there on the south corner of the building.
I see it now, thank you. And then one last thing, just to confirm, the third floor terraces are only accessible to those third floor units, correct?
That's correct.
Everyone has their own private office.
Sure. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Other questions for the petitioner? Ms. Beeky.
Given our tree ordinance, and again, we're trying to protect trees because Royal Oak's been losing its tree canopy quite aggressively in the last 10 to 15 years. Is it, are you feeling comfortable with the fact that it's taking out the extra trees that we could go ahead and include the fee so we can plant them in other locations?
Yeah.
Because I think it's appropriate. And again, as related to that and related to the community benefits, I also appreciate a lot of the material selection, and I hope that will be followed through on because I really appreciate the recyclability of the metal and having the solid wood and such.
Yeah.
We've also, even though you don't consider it a tree, we've got, I think, six arborvitae on the site. So there is a great deal of vegetation going in, but we're also cognizant of the fact that it's not a huge site. We don't want trees that are going to become a problem in the future. That's why some of the selections we made are trees that will grow in a tight area, that kind of thing. So, but yes, we understand the tree ordinance.
Yeah, so I think the, it was calculated at 5,600, but we had a different calculation. I think it was around 3,000 because we, and I think we can work that out, but no, we won't have a problem making a contribution. We just want to get the numbers right and that type of thing. I also want to point out that with respect to that, there's three very mature trees kind of on the property line in the rear of the property, and we are preserving those trees. I will tell you that most projects, those would have been cut down. So because just, it creates some difficulties in that corner, but that's not a problem with respect to what we're doing here today.
Yeah, I don't know about the city department, I would consider the arborvitae included in trees myself, but--
You guys have any questions?
I forgot it before, I apologize. You'd mentioned the potential for offering all the residents recycling. The question that I have, and it's related to a totally separate project, on Rochester Road, north of 13 Mile, a multi-family, multi-unit project that has, on trash and recycling day, the street, the residential street it's adjacent to is a disaster. There is probably over 30 recycling bins and trash cans set out at the curb at the corner to service that particular development. This particular property has 30 units. I see the trash enclosure in the corner, that makes sense to me in terms of how that would be serviced. Is the intent, if you were to offer recycling to these residents, because you mentioned the purchasing of the bins, would that entail having 30 recycling bins--
No.
--in the parking lot somewhere that need to be serviced? Or how would that be?
No, they've done this with Sakura for years, and they work out a transfer of the bins, or they come pick it up. So it's a, it's a service that they work through with Sakura. So no, I know exactly what you're talking about because I have some neighborhoods on 13, some that happens on 13 Mile, yeah, and like 15 or 30, you know, recycling bins come out on trash pickup, but that's not going to be the case here.
So similar--
First of all, there wouldn't be room for it--
Right.
--at all. And by the way, for all the apartments, all those are commercial pickups. City doesn't pick up anything on those apartments at Crooks.
Thank you.
Other questions for the petitioner?
Yeah. I just, I just want to, one thing I wanted to follow up with Commissioner Beeky. I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Amber. He, they clearly, and I happen to know this for a fact, rent units to people with disabilities. The problem, and I think was inartfully explained, is that when someone calls, they don't always have that type of unit available. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And then, but if somebody else calls and wants a unit in that building, they're going to run it to them. And it's kind of the ebb and flow, and quite frankly, they have a very low vacancy rate at most of their places because of their reputation. So if somebody doesn't grab it, it could go to the next person. So that's really the difficulty in renting the type A units.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I think I need Mr. Schneider and Mr. Cowan.
All right.
So first of all, let me just say this before I start asking my questions. I really like the project, I think it's appropriate. I love the spacing, having the outdoor spaces for all the units. I like some of the solutions that you came up with, but I got a couple of questions now. I've been out to the site. Let's start with this, because let's go back to the tree. You guys left with the tree. Mr. Schneider, your write-up says there's a 50% increase in the tree canopy. Can you explain that? And that-- I just meant based on the number of trees we'll have on the site total versus what's on the site currently. Just by the number of trees? Correct. That's how you calculated? That was my question? Yes. Correct. Okay.
We number out the tree.
Correct. And when I looked at the drawing, I looked at it eight by 10, I didn't look at the larger size, and you don't have the existing trees on the west lot line depicted, but you do have a note there that I didn't see, and you just brought it up. So you're going to leave those three trees there? The three, the three large circles, those are depicted, those are the trees. Okay, that's what that means. Okay, well, I can only say this. Those trees are really interfering with the power lines. I don't know if that's going to be good or bad. I just want to-- We, if I might, we were originally going to take those down, and when we got the original report back from the city, and, I mean, it's a catch-22. You know, if we take them down, we have to replace that amount of tree. And those are fairly substantial trees, so it makes more sense for us to keep those trees. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Amber would be happy to replace each one of those with a different tree, but we're not going to put, you know, we wouldn't be able to put enough trees on the site to replace the diameter of those trees, is what I'm telling you. So that was why we changed direction and saved those trees. Okay, I understand. That's a, the financial issue there and is, they probably need some trimming. They need a lot of trimming, and I'm sure Edison will continue--
Well, if you look at them, the Edison hacker, they've been there already.
Right. Yeah, well, but they-- They're in a bad location, they're right under the power lines. They weren't planned, I'm sure, wisely, and so I, anyways, I wish they weren't there today. We're penalized if we take them down in a position where we can't even come close to replacing that amount of tree diameter. It would be impossible. All right, well, I just say, I don't know how the vote's going to go. I don't want to penalize you for that. I would like those trees to be removed, but that's just me. I have another question about the site. Your drawings show from east to west, a single elevation, but in fact, at the back of the lot, it's pretty severely sloped there. Correct. We've already engaged a civil engineer, and we're going to do a significant amount of regrading to make the site work. Okay, is that going to affect your exit of the fire truck at the west? No, because it's going to have to, that's going to be one of the things that drives it. We're going to be bringing the grade up rather than, you know, taking it down. All right, so you've been thinking about it? Yes, we have been thinking about it very much. I have a question about the nomenclature you used. You used the term healthy living standards when you're talking about the materials. What does that mean? So a number of the buildings, so we've been working on buildings that have had some sort of green criteria for about, close to 20 years now. A lot of the affordable housing that we do, or affordable senior housing, were required to meet either Enterprise Green or LEEDs or something like that. Those rating agencies basically talk about healthy living materials. So for instance, you get points for using materials like wood flooring, things like, you get, you're not penalized, but they would prefer you not use things like carpeting or vinyl because of, you know, the petroleum product base, outgassing, whatever you want to call the different things that come with that. So part of healthy living is dealing with materials that are, you know, renewable. And also, you know, carpet is sometimes associated with health problems like asthma, things like that, because it can hold on to dust and things like that. So that's where the healthy living designation comes from. Okay, and does somebody, some scoring agency use published healthy living standards as a measuring stick? Well, like I said, LEEDs, Enterprise Green, green building, they will actually give you additional points for using materials such as wood flooring, tile flooring, things like that. Okay, I guess I understand more now. This is not a capitalized term, but the way you're using it looked like it was a term art there. Correct. They just refer to it as healthy living. Same thing, you know, low VOC paints and all the rest of the things that you try. The interior environment using materials that are, that they deem healthier than other materials. All right, and the last comment I'll make, I see you've got LED lights here, the pictures of the units you have here for the pole lights are not shielded lights, the wall lights are nicely shielded. But as you, I'm sure you are well aware that LEDs by their nature glare, and they can be very hard to manage. Control, yep. So I assume an architect of your experience is going to spend some time studying that. We will have a study done, and we will make sure that they, you know, don't glare and that they don't spill light out. I'm also not a fan of LED lighting. If I could hit on the universal for just one more thing. Certainly. I apologize if my language wasn't as artful as it should have been, but what I was attempting to say is, so two of these units are complete ADA units in terms of all the accessibility amenities. What I was suggesting is, we find that there are residents that want more cabinet space, for instance, and things like that. And so in a true accessible or ADA unit, we end up with limited counter, or limited counter cabinet space and things like that. So these units, all of the ground floor units are the exact same floor plan. So spatially, the bathroom is large enough, everything is there to make any one of those a full-blown accessible unit. It's, two of them will be built out that way. The other two will have different, they'll just have a full-height cabinet and no grab bars. But we've also dealt with people that have some disability that don't want lower counters, they want higher counters. So it's, it's, one of the, one of the issues we run into with universal design and the ADA is it is designed for one size fits all, and that does not necessarily work that well. My wife had a sister who since passed away that had multiple sclerosis, for instance. She hated a barrier-free toilet stall. She preferred to have the walls closer to her so she could help negotiate herself in the stall. So there's a bunch of different things that go into it, so I just want to clear that up.
I understood, and actually maybe to your earlier point, Ms. Douglas, even just the grab bars being in all of those units, because no matter anyone's ability to stand or not stand, grab bars, for example, would be a universal design element that would help--
We can certainly, we could certainly talk to Mr. Amber about putting grab bars in four more units. I mean, that's not--
But I understand the differentiation between someone in a wheelchair and that is, it makes a difference as well. Thank you.
All right, are there other questions for the petitioner? All right, since there isn't, you may have a seat, and we'll have a discussion over here. All right. Thank you, Counselor. All right, before we move on, I'm going to call for the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the public who would like to speak on this PUD rezoning item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the side of the table for discussion among the commissioners, and who wants to go? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just think, overall, I like what was presented today. I think that when I look at, if I were to look at this building independent of its local-- I look at, if I were to look at this building independent of its location, and were to actually have to pick a spot, I think this would be the right spot to put a development like this. I live, I mean, just a stone's throw away, maybe a little longer, maybe a, you know, Clyde Esbury Drive, Three Wood away, from the Amber Development, Studio Apartment Development on 11 Mile. I drive by it every day. Not every day, but quite often, all hours of the day. And I think the parking there is very much adequate, so I have no concerns about the parking. I like the idea through the PUD concept that we're bringing 15 EV chargers. I think, one, that's an amenity for the developer to get people, you know, looking at their building, but also, at least in the industry that I operate in, we know that the presence of EV chargers influence people's decisions to buy EVs. So you sort of get this indirect, you know, even if they come in with a gasoline-operated vehicle, or no vehicle at all, or whatever it may be, if they're looking to purchase a new car, the fact that the building has 15, not 1.5, not two, but 15, means that they'll be available. And so I think there's this thing outside the building that, you know, promotes some additional environmental benefit.
I understand the argument on the ADA units, the two units. I'm glad that the first-floor units are all barrier-free, and I think, and I agree, I've also had family members that have different degrees of abilities, and I think it's a tough nut to crack. And I'm glad that they put two in, and that they have the ability to adapt the remaining units, especially as we see the population of Michigan getting older. And I think down the road in 10, 15, 20 years, those units will be adapted accordingly to meet the demand of an aging population. So I think it's a good build. I think it's, you know, the benefits are clear to me, and I'll be supporting the project.
All right, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, you look at our existing zoning requirements, the 25-foot setback is what I'll focus on here. And if you followed 25-foot setbacks on the north and south sides of this building, on this 100-foot wide building, you'd have a 50-foot wide building in the middle of the lot and no room for parking, I mean, basically a driveway around the edges. And yet, this is absolutely consistent with, you know, the rest of the act, the rest of the uses in this area. The design is very much like designs that we've already approved for this company, just a little bit north of this property. And I look at our zoning requirements, and the existing lot area to development ratio provides for multifamily dwellings with 2,400 to 4,800 square feet of site area for each dwelling. I mean, houses in Royal Oak don't have 2,400 square feet of occupiable area, and, I mean, already. And then the market that we're seeing is increasingly for smaller units, individual units, studios, such as this company has successfully offered. I sort of made a, I sort of picked on them a little bit over the issue of accessibility and Universal Design concepts, because if you look at the city's community benefits brochure and principles, everybody kind of gloms onto environmental sustainability and green architecture, because that's like the first thing on the page. But then you go to the back page, and there's a diversity, equity, and inclusion set of standards. And when you look at people with, at our aging population, as the mayor points out, you look at the needs of people with many disabilities, not necessarily just wheelchairs or physical disabilities, but people with vision impairment, with hearing impairment. There are many ways that developers can develop residential units that serve those needs, and yet still are appealing to general tenants, as you have said. And I would, I'm saying this, I'm making a point to any developers who are listening, that read the whole brochure and look for other community benefits that will be appealing certainly to me. So I like this project.
All right, Mr. Cantina?
So I'm always very sensitive to how we're using, excuse me, the PUD process, especially when we have properties where the existing zoning is already zoned for what's being proposed in the new project. In this particular case, I do think it's an appropriate project in the sense that the site is a little bit challenging. I do think they were very thoughtful in how they did design the project to sort of maximize what they could get there. It's being surrounded by apartment buildings. I think it's an appropriate use for this site. And the reason I brought up the questions earlier about what benefits would have been, were included because they went the PUD route, was to try to highlight if, in fact, putting those guidelines out there were having the intended effect, which was to try to elicit some of the features in buildings that we are in favor of. And I think this is a case of that. They could have gone down the route of proposing a project under the underlying zoning of multifamily, not including several of those amenities, and sort of taken their chances at the zoning board. They chose to use the PUD process and include those amenities to really bring a better project forward. So I think it's a good project. I certainly appreciate the locally sourced materials list that you put together. That's actually something that we rarely see in amenity, excuse me, amenity lists that are being proposed. And so the fact that you listed all those out, I think, is, you know, going one additional step beyond what we normally see from folks. So I support the project.
I want to make a general comment in terms of PUDs. Again, like Mr. Cantina, I'm concerned, and again, working through on our new master plan, we've looked at, and we're getting feedback that we have used that process a lot. And I personally think that our community benefits, as well as our sustainability plan, should be applied to all our projects, not as a quid pro quo that if you do this, we'll give you a PUD. I would like the city to get to a point where it's just the normal practice, that we're building things that we'd like to see standing for 50 or 100 years, because we're simply in an era that the materials are not available, and to the point of your material selection, fewer toxins and such, we just have to start moving away from those things, or it's just going to be game over for everyone in that sense. So as much as I hesitate about the PUD situation, because of the location of this building, and because of the accompanying buildings in your portfolio being multifamily, as well as the material selection, I can kind of overlook that in the sense of moving it forward, but I really don't like the idea of this. I would like us to get to a point where those community benefits pertain to all projects in Royal Oak simply. And that's the thing that I don't like about it being, oh, we wouldn't do this if it weren't that, because our sustainability plan and the community benefits, which kind of articulate many of our plans, our aging in place, our diversity, inclusion, such things, they're simply articulating things that really apply to everything. And so I think that's an internal issue we need to clean up and change that in our document. But as it stands now, I'm in support of that with that little bit of hesitation in terms of that designation for the PUD.
All right, other questions, comments, or a motion of some kind? Mr. Resby?
Mr. Casada, to get things going, I'd like to make a motion with the approval level being a final PUD plan, not a preliminary PUD plan, with contingencies A, B, and C, and the subsets within C, 1 through 7, as well as D, E, F, G, and H.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a discussion on the issue? Mr. Ellison?
Yeah, I have been strangely quiet tonight.
Strangely.
And most of it is because of my experience. I mean, the petitioners we're dealing with, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Cowan, and Mr. Amber, we've been down this road many, many times before, and I understand the process of what you guys do. I don't think anybody in this city understands our PUD process as much as these gentlemen do, especially Mr. Schneider. So, yeah, nothing I never surprised me. I think you did a fine job of capturing everything we want in our city. Going with the PUD gave them the opportunity to give us a little bit more flair, if you will, with the charging stations and all that. And I think that's the glory of the PUD. As long as it's not abused, this is certainly far from being abused. This is a good use of the PUD process. It allows us to get good developments. It allows us to get properties in here and provide housing. I mean, if I heard you correctly, you were talking like $1,400. Is that, I mean, that's reasonable, especially in Royal Oak. It's very reasonable. And so we can get people into the community, settle, and it's always the plan the Royal Oak had. You figure a way to get them into the city, you get them to fall in love with the city, they're going to stay here by their house for years and family. And it happens over and over and over again. And that's what these type of units are going to do. These studios and these one-bedroom apartments are going to bring in those people that are going to eventually settle in this community and become part of the fabric of our community. And so, you know, undoubtedly, I'm supportive of this project. I think it's a good project, and I thank you for bringing it forth.
Mr. Resby?
Yeah, Mr. Casada, the reason I was comfortable making this motion is, while I would prefer to see the zoning designation remain consistent with the rest of the area that's already zoned the way it is versus PUD, I also think that sometimes the zoning can be a little bit restrictive, and it doesn't really reflect the living styles and the density requirements that are going to be needed to support today's developments versus when the zoning was first adopted. So I actually think this project makes a lot of sense on a lot of levels. That's why I was comfortable to make that motion.
All right, other comments? Mr. Beeky?
I'll just add to that, and again, this is for our side of the table, that as we work with this master plan, we have to keep in mind, we have to update the zoning in the sense of having it reflect, again, current times, current needs, and so that, again, the PUD could be phased out or used very minimally, because our zoning and our plan are articulate and reflect our other plans in the city, and it's not a hodgepodge.
All right.
I should just support that. I mean, the day should come where, you know, with the potential rezoning that follows the master plan, the day should come where developments like this never even come to the planning commission. I mean, they're so solidly designed and meet the expectations both of the neighborhood and of the developers, that they're administratively approved and we're on the job.
All right, thank you.
Since we're not being...
All right. Any other comments on this? Okay, I'm going to make a couple of quick ones here. I'm going to be supporting this. I would say, for the record, we, this project in my mind demonstrates that it met all the criteria of 770-98, the PUD regulations. I also considered the amendment criteria, 770-129, and I, my own feeling is that it met those criteria too, or at least complied with them to my satisfaction. The one thing that I was concerned about, these are not micro apartments. These are not like the ones on 11 Mile. Those are like 300, 360. These are 500, 600. And I was concerned about that until I heard that they were only going to run up to one person. If I hadn't heard that, I would have a lot more concern about it, because that is one of the criteria as far as, you know, pressure on the local facilities, which parking is one of them. But having heard that, I have no hesitation about supporting the project. I think it is an appropriate response to the site. They basically designed this to maximize the use of the site within some parameters, like height parameters, and I think they did a good job. The last thing I would say, though, I'm going to say yes to the motion, but I would vote, and I might be the only one, but I would vote to allow them to take those three trees along the back line down and waive the penalty for that, because I think there's, those are, those trees ought to go. But that's just my feeling. I'm still going to vote yes. Any other comments? All right, I will call for the vote. The motion is to vote to recommend approval of the PUD with the contingencies listed by staff, by Mr. Resby, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. You're on your way to the city commission. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I will help usher the crowd out.
All right, other business. Mr. Twain?
The only thing I have is the Michigan Planner Monthly Magazine is listed. Nothing to add. The, other than to indicate the master plan survey will be closing this month, and we have a meeting scheduled with DPZ the first, or the week of January 8th, I guess, to keep things moving.
All right, very good.
Am I correct in my understanding that 2,900 people have taken this survey already?
That was as of last week.
Okay. Yeah, I was stunned at that and delighted. I mean, it will be representative of the will of the people. However it turns out, I'm very, we can be very confident as we move forward that we have really heard what people want.
All right, other comments? Mr. Beeky?
I think that's great, too. And I think also, we always have to keep in mind, it's what people answer, and then also what we know from the community in terms of our observations and things. But the other thing I wanted to mention, just so people can remember, and I don't know if I've already said this here, but the Association of Pedestrian Bicycle Professionals is going to have their conference in Detroit, August 12th to 14th in the coming year. So if you're into biking or advocacy, and again, that's part of our master plan that we're trying to bring forward from others and also work on that more, I just want to have that out there for people to put on their calendar. And I'm hoping more people will join the association also, at least some of our staff, but maybe some advocates as well.
Can you forward more information electronically to us?
For sure. And then I also, with the Global Walkability Correspondence Network, I think I'm going to establish a Royal Oak branch, local branch of that, and also then host some walks and invite planning commissioners, some staff, and also try to grow our walkability advocacy, because as we know, everyone walks, whether it's to your car to go somewhere or to the shops. But just also grow awareness in conjunction with the work we're doing with the master plan, too.
All right, any other comments from commissioners? I would add only that I'm glad to hear about people are being responsive to the online survey. I would suggest anybody out there in TV land who has not taken the survey, please do so. Go to the website and take the survey.
Well, and make sure they know that if they took a survey last spring, that was different. I mean, last spring, the survey was designed to collect ideas. And then planners consolidated those ideas in a thought document, and now people, they're asking people to quantify their responses to the ideas that emerged from that process. So if you took the survey six months ago, take this one. It's different.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is a motion to adjourn, yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Third.
Everybody's second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.